Good evening and welcome to the March 9th, 2022 School Committee Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Our first item of business is a department report update from the robotics team and Ms. Julie Kim, welcome.
Thank you for having us. It's our pleasure to be here tonight. Myself and Mrs. Marlene King, we are the co-advisors for the Wilmington Wired Wildcats. It is a tongue twister. We are a high school-based robotics team affiliated with FIRST. FIRST is a global robotics community which actually helps to promote STEM education for young people. FIRST stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. So at this point, I'm going to have our team members, we don't have everybody present, but we do have a good showing of students who are going to come and actually talk to you about who they are, what they've learned, and any challenges that they've had to overcome through the robotics competition.
A little technical-ish, so you know what's happening.
Don't worry. We're not distracted at all. We're high school teachers, we can teach them anything.
So we're sitting here, so I can't see the screen behind me. So what they've done is they provided a screen for those of us sitting right here, so we can see the same PowerPoint, which is often confusing to people because they wonder what we're looking at. But we're actually looking at your presentation, it's right in front of us. So it wasn't working, and so I didn't want to turn my head and not look at what was happening in front of me, so, alright.
Alright, so this is the team.
Hello, my name is Victor, I'm a senior. I'm the project manager and the notebook lead. The main challenge I've encountered when I was in this team is that not only I have two roles to manage, but I have to summarize each meeting as the month progresses, and also have to manage the task as each meeting goes on. This is a notebook we brought to the competition. It has a summary of each meetings, about the team, the competition, and the engineering design progress. You can pass it around.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Eleanor, I'm a freshman and the strategy lead. Something difficult for me personally was adapting to the different types of meet because of COVID, this year there were two types, a remote meet, which was our first one, and then for us, a week after, an in-person meet. And the game changes in small ways between the two, so I had to adapt for a remote meet. And then we had to practice and change the strategy and the documents for the in-person meet right afterwards. This is my third year doing robotics, and I actually came up from the middle school team, like a lot of our members. I'm gonna, the game principle, I guess, is to move pieces of freight from one end of the field to the other. There were three types, and our general strategy was to put them on the top level, which was worth the most amount of points. Another key aspect of the game was these ducks, they're on a carousel, which is a plate with an axle in the middle, and we spin them off for extra points. I have with me the flyers that we handed out to the teams at the meet so that they could see what we could do. Okay, yeah, take one, pass it on, there'll probably be extras. And also, I have the scoring form for the in-person matches, which details pretty much exactly the different ways that you can score, and is how we scored our remote matches, and was part of our scouting for the in-person. You can also look at those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, we're the mechanical team. My name is Sarthak, and I'm a 10th grader.
My name is Cam, and I'm a 9th grader.
My name is Mondi, and I'm a 7th grader.
My name is Dat, and I'm a 10th grader.
And our biggest challenge as a team was coming up with a claw, which took multiple iterations to come up with, to grab the freight and put it on the highest level.
So our claw has been through multiple iterations as we continued to find flaws that kept coming up. This is one of our iterations that, if you can see, has been through a lot. We tried to fix it manually, but nothing was working. So we decided to redesign and remodel with a mechanical team and our CAD team, and we came up with our latest iteration. It looks much different, and the density of the 3D-printed part is much more thick on the outside layers of the shell, and around our servo motors, which are these black ones above the gears, are held in place by 3D-printed platforms that are our newest addition.
Now, this arm stands upon chassis, which is essentially just the base, and it has four mechnum wheels attached to it, and that means that we can move in all directions. We also have chains within it, which just help it to move better, and also, we have these wheels attached on the side, because there are like these boundaries within the game, and it just helps us to get over them easier.
And here on the robot, we have this wheel that allows us to spin the carousel to gain points by getting this duck off the carousel to score points.
Hi, I'm Nicholas, I'm the software lead, and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Babush, and I'm a freshman.
One of our biggest challenges was through problems with the communication system on the robot. The robot communicates through two cell phones into what are called expansion hubs, which you can see right there and right there. Expansion hubs are sort of like the brain of the robot, and they direct the movement of the motors, and the phones communicate through a system called a private Wi-Fi network. The problem with that is that it leads to, if one part of that system is disconnected or not working, the entire robot will shut down essentially, which can get annoying. So, yeah.
And another thing that we did this year is we used the color sensor, which is right here. Basically, we used that in conjunction with the elapsed time variable to smartly make our tolerance mode, which has multiple different outcomes that can change depending on where random variables.
We're the CAD team. My name is Rachel, I'm a junior, and this is my second year in robotics.
Hi, my name is Leanne, I'm a junior, and this is my first year in robotics.
My name is Audrey, I'm a junior, and this is my first year in robotics.
My name is Kira, I'm a freshman, and this is also my first year in robotics.
So CAD stands for Computer-Aided Design, which essentially means that we take a 2D design and turn it into a 3D model, which we then make into an actual object using a 3D printer. And as you can see on the robot, we designed and printed our battery case, and we designed and 3D-printed our phone case. I'd say one of our biggest challenges for majority of the team is that due to the pandemic, most of our previous, we had a gap year, so most of our previous members graduated, so we basically had to start from scratch, which came with a big learning curve, but thankfully, we overcame it.
One of the other big challenges we faced was with the 3D printer, so due to lack of maintenance during COVID-19, when we got back to school in September, the 3D printers weren't working. And in addition, none of the CAD team members have ever used a 3D printer before, but after like a long process of trial and error, we were finally able to get the 3D printer working and working really well.
So another thing we designed was the capstone, which this goes. Our robot places this on top of the shipping hub to score points. So this was our first model, which goes on it really well, but we had trouble picking it up. So we designed this different one, which is made out of spheres, because that's what our claw is good at picking up, and it also gets knocked over a lot during a match, so it's the same no matter which way it's on. And we made this prototype of it without the holes to practice printing spheres, since that was difficult to do. And then this was the final version, which goes like that.
One of the other things we printed were little keychains for each of our members. And so ducks featured prominently in our game, and so we named our robot Dequi, and we thought it was appropriate. So we actually have these for you to keep, so if you'd like to take one and pass it down. At the competition itself, the CAD team doesn't really have much to do, because it's not like we can bring the printer with us. So we did a lot of scouting, like looking at what other robots could do, how they worked, and it was surprisingly easy, and I think that I can speak for all of us when I say we had a lot of fun with it.
Hi, my name is Nikos, and I'm the community outreach and PR lead on the robotics team. I'm a junior, and this is my first year here. So we actually have a lot of people on our team, especially compared to other schools. And how we got a lot of people, we presented our club at the Activities Fair at the beginning of the year, and we also got a lot of members through word of mouth. That's how I ended up joining this year, and I'm really glad that we were able to get more people through that method, because I wouldn't have joined if I didn't hear about it from Leanne or she. And we also run an Instagram account where we share pictures and videos of the progress we make on our robot. And I would think one of the biggest challenges we've had is trying to get more followers with that account. We've actually gained a lot, but we're still trying to get more to gain more exposure out there and get more outreach to the community. And another challenge is we're trying to find some engineers to help mentor our team, so if there are any engineers out there nearby, we're happy to have you with us. Oh yeah, you can DM us at wildcats underscore robotics. Here are some pictures of our robot. And we also have some videos. The first one is of the robot getting ducks off the carousel, which is how we got a lot of points. And this is us at the competition last month. We actually got second place, and in the video, they are controlling the robot, trying to carry the different freights to the hub there. And now, we're going to have the mechanical team show you how the robot moves.
We use this phone to connect with the phone that's on the robot, to basically connect with it and to control it with the controllers.
That's how it moves.
That was awesome. Are there more? I'm sorry, some more?
No, no, we're done.
Can we ask questions?
The floor is open, yes.
I'm sure there are some questions or comments, Mr. Fenely.
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, this is amazing, and I think you guys were here a couple of years ago before COVID, and I was equally impressed, but how long does something like this take to put together? Like, how long have you guys been working on this? Probably an oversimplified question, I imagine, but...
It took us this year, like, I'd say probably longer than it usually takes us, which took us like around four months, I think, from like the beginning of the year, because it also took time for the competition to actually come out and all its rules. And we also needed to manage the team since, as one of the members have already said, we had a practically new team, and we had to come up with the management. And, anybody else?
The game comes out in September every year, and we actually, our first meeting was, I think, a week or two before it came out. And then immediately after we started drafting plans, and I, as the strategy lead, worked on the strategy, we met at the beginning every Thursday and Friday until 4:30. As the competition came closer, we started meeting more frequently, and right now, since they're over, we meet every Thursday until 4:30.
So our claw was, had multiple flaws, you know, it kept breaking at our most crucial parts that we needed it to not. So our printer at school was unfortunately not working at some periods, so some other people had to step in, and I myself printed a few key parts with the CAD team's help, of course. And so we went through multiple iterations, you know, printing problems, they come up, and so we went through, I'd say, five models, and the one that I showed was one of them. And, you know, just mistakes happen, and so we just had to keep going, keep making, you know, fixing it and making it better.
It's amazing, so thank you.
Any questions or comments, Mrs. Fenely?
I just have to say, I look forward to this club coming before the school committee, because it's amazing, the creations that you create. I'm not a, I'm a bad generation, I'm not a techie in any of this, but I gotta go and watch this stuff, but it truly is meaningful and seeing them just within our schools. And then you just, and the passion that is evident in your teams, and, you know, I know that you guys are all broken down collectively in your different groups, but the collaboration and coming together to create something like this and to take second place, you know what I mean? That's a huge accomplishment, especially in a high school where this club is still relatively new. And it's amazing, the gains that you've made, and I can, to be honest with you, I'm a little lost in the vocabulary, but, you know, I'll go over the app when I get home. But I have to say, I'm just so very proud of the time and investment and the problem-solving piece that you've all had to undertake to create your final project, and I commend you.
Other questions or comments?
We're obviously going to continue doing this in future years, but right now, we're focusing instead on, I forget the word, but like onboarding, that's it, yes, thank you, teaching members from different parts of the team how to do things, like we're building pushbots. I'm not an engineer person, but I'm learning how to do it. That's our goal.
Awesome. Can I ask a quick question about the portfolio? Is that a requirement for the, oh, it is a requirement, for the competition?
You give it to the judges and also make decisions on who can do it best.
Oh, I see. And about how long, I mean, obviously there are people doing different pieces of it, but how long does that process take? So it looks like you're doc, I didn't get to read the whole thing, but you're documenting every single step of the process, is that, is that accurate?
Personally, I did the majority of the work, because I didn't have a lot of partners, unfortunately, but that's fine. The way I usually do is that each meeting, I come in the beginning and do attendance, and then after attendance, I find out what everyone's plan to do, and at the end of the meeting, I summarize what had been accomplished and what's planned for next meeting. And then, once I got all the meetings right before the competition, I edit, edited each of them, and at the, at the front of that notebook, if you view it, it has a full-on summary of the entire of each meeting.
And you organize the whole thing as well, with all the tabs and the different, so that it's easy for the judges to get to what they need to get to?
Yep.
That's all. Very impressive, thank you. Oh, I can, I can see that. I can see that. And then homework, I know. Well, anything else, any other questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
You guys are all amazing, and a credit to Wilmington High School, and we are very, very proud of you.
Absolutely, thank you. That's awesome. Thank you. And thank you very much, we appreciate your leadership. Alright. Isabella and David, are you ready, just about ready when they clear? The next item of business is our middle school student representatives. Give us an update.
Wilmington Middle School's been a very busy place recently. The Wilmington Middle School Literacy Magazine is working on their next edition title, Theme Capsule. This edition will include stories, poems, and artwork dedicated to the history. More specifically, students have been exploring the history of the Wilmington Middle School. Time Capsule will include stories and interviews from teachers who have been there from the beginning. Some started as students and are now teachers.
On March 11th, guidance counselors will visit 8th graders at the middle school. They will review the program of studies with students and help them navigate course selections for their freshman year. It's hard to believe our middle school years are almost over.
The World Culture Club just wrapped up their Lunar New Year celebration with a focus on the Chinese culture. They will be celebrating April Fools traditions around the world. Surveys will be going out to Wilmington Middle School students to dedicate our next world adventure.
Student council partner with GSA Club to help hang awareness signs. Students are committed to making Wilmington Middle School a safe space for all students. There will be a day of silence on April 8th to bring awareness.
For Project 351, did you know more than one in three children living in Massachusetts under the age of 13 live in low-income or homeless situations? Wilmington's Project 351 ambassador, Ally Hall, will be running our annual Cradle to Crayons Clothing Drive from Tuesday, March 29th to Monday, April 4th. Through our generous donations, we are able to positively impact the lives of children in our state.
Be our guest, be our guest. Wilmington Middle School Drama Club is proud to present their much anticipated production of Beauty and the Beast. From March 24th to 26th, the Middle School Auditorium will hop the globe over to France for a magical tale that will delight and inspire the audience. Tickets are available by calling 978-267-7225, or students may purchase them in the school beginning March 14th. If you have not gotten your tickets and you would like to see the show, act fast, because half the tickets, over half the tickets have been sold. We hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Is that the end? So if we need tickets, we have to call that number, is that what we have to do? Alright, and you're suggesting that we get our tickets ahead of time? And how many performances will it be?
So there's going to be three shows, the 24th, the 25th, and the 26th.
That's Friday, Saturday, Sunday? I'm guessing?
Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, okay. Alright, you hear that? Get your tickets very soon. We're looking forward to it. Thank you, as always, for your...
Not a school committee walk-in policy?
I know, we can't show our badges? Thank you so much, we really love having you here, and we appreciate your time, thank you. Any questions, I'm sorry, comments? I just passed right over that part. Well, we'll see you at Beauty and the Beast, for sure. Are you in it?
I'm on costumes, but I'm not in it.
Okay, well, you're, but you're a part of it. Alright, well, I'll see you there. Alright, thanks so much.
Thank you both.
Alright. Our next item of business is public comment, Mr. Ragsdale.
We had no one sign up for public comment tonight, but is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, the committee also received two written public comments, which were distributed to us before the meeting.
Thank you. Alright. Item six, we have approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, February 16th, 2022. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That, oh, and one abstention. Is that an abstention? Yes. So Joe is an abstention, thank you. We have acceptance of the WEF Curriculum Grants Award. I don't have that right in front of me. There's quite a few. Sorry, I'm just getting it, does anyone have it up?
Yeah, do you want me to read them?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, so WEF is requesting approval for $9,357.17 in curriculum grants, $463 to Kelsey O'Neil and Niam Anand for Recipe for Reading Success Program Alphabet Series, sped teachers at Woburn Street, $4,400 to Michelle Leveque, K through 5 STEM Coordinator, for STEM Stimulating Thinking Engagement Making, $2,000 to Heather Peachey, Wildwood and Batwell Librarian, for immersive reading with Vox Books for the Wildwood and Batwell, $430 to Amy Marr, 5th grade teacher at the West, for math games, play, changes, everything, $210 to Kelly Sullivan, sped teacher at the West, for supporting fluency during reading instruction, $994 to Christine Hollerin and Christine Stanford, teachers at the Wildwood, for strengthening the home-school-connection-decodable-book-library, $994 to Christine Hollerin, and, oop, that is a repetition, and $860 to Ashley Rokobauer, Strides teacher at WHS, for Unique Learning System for Strides Classroom.
Thank you so much. And there is a motion, would someone like to make that motion? Mr. Plowman, thank you.
To accept the 2022 WEF Core Deliverance, an amount of $9,357.17.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Smaha, all in favor? Excellent, and thank you, thank you to WEF, as always, for your generous, generous donation. We have warrants G25, 26, R25, L70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, FS51, 52, and 53. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale, all in favor? That's unanimous. How you doing, MJ? I talked very quickly, I apologize. We have, we'll have a recording, just in case, but I'll try and slow down. Payroll ending 3/2/2022. Thank you, Mr. Smaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? It's unanimous. And then we have sped 27, 28. Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mrs. Plowman, all in favor? That is one abstention? Thank you. Alright. And we're good. Superintendent's report, Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone. There are four items tonight under the superintendent's report, and I'll follow in order. First off, with an update on the MSBA, or Mass School Building Authority, great news coming fresh off of last night, and thank you so very much, on behalf of the school committee and members of our town, for the successful turnout that we saw last evening, and a successful passing of the, successful appropriation of funds to allow the district and allow the town to move forward in the MSBA partnership program and move forward towards feasibility study. It certainly was a partnership effort upon many, and really so very, very grateful for the residents who took the time and of their evening to come out. So, very briefly, the next things and what follows, I know probably questions on many of mine. There are a couple of different things left that are part of this current phase that we're in. We expect to be certifying enrollment in short, in short order, and we look to receive that from the MSBA shortly. There are some other paperwork that goes along with that, the appropriate documentation of the successful vote last evening. And then, the final step, and most important, will be that the town will be, we expect to be invited into feasibility study, as they term it, by the Board of Directors of the Mass School Building Authority, and our understanding is that date is scheduled for April 27th. So, nothing imminent, not right away, some background paperwork and such, but we're onwards, and we're upwards, and we're going in the right direction, and so, again, thank you to the town who recognized this important need to address. The next item, leadership search updates. There are two memos in the packet this evening. I won't speak at great length with the first one, but just to share with you the announcement and the good news that we are excited to have Ms. Kathleen Bissell, who will be joining us as the next principal of the Wildwood Early Childhood Center. She will officially be joining us after April, after the April vacation break. Ms. Bissell comes to us from the Amesbury Public Schools. You can read a little bit more about her recent professional endeavors and the search process that went along with that, and we will look to, hopefully, have her come and introduce you to you as a committee and to the community in the very near future. The other memo that is in the, in the packet has to do with the high school. And if I may, ask Mr. Gendron, who is with us tonight, to come forward. Ryan Gendron, it's a pleasure to introduce him to our school committee, our community, as the next principal of the Wilmington High School. Just a couple of words about Mr. Gendron. He currently is the associate principal at the Waldham High School, and he has a range of experiences working in a variety of educational communities, both here in Massachusetts, as well as farther afield in Virginia. When he returned to Massachusetts a number of years ago, he joined Lexington he joined Lexington Public Schools, where he served there as a teacher for some time, completed his administrative internship then, and moved on and was appointed in 2018 to his current role, again, as mentioned, as the Associate Principal. As part of this search process, as we do for all of these administrative searches or leadership searches, we conduct site visits, and we took a team of folks, many of the central office team, as well as one of our CTL leaders here, and we visited all of the four semifinalists, one of which obviously was Mr. Gendron's site. We spent the better part of the day meeting with a vast array of students, with staff, educational leaders, and members of the community, and it was really, really a very impressive display of folks who came forward to speak on behalf of Mr. Gendron. And the feedback through that process identified Mr. Gendron as a leader who is compassionate, who's caring, and he's solution-oriented, and with all of that, we're so glad to have him here, have him join us at the high school and the community of Wilmington. Welcome, Mr. Gendron.
Welcome. Thanks for being here. We already have questions, Mrs. Birds.
So is Mr. Gendron reading crying still for your project?
He is. He had a lot of good things to say about Wilmington. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for having me. Thank you, Dr. Brand. You know, I just wanted to say how excited and honored I am to be selected as the next principal of Wilmington High School. Throughout the search process, I met so many incredible students and staff members and families and administrators, and I'm really looking forward to meeting all the stakeholders of the WHS community to ensure a world-class education for all the students in Wilmington. I can't wait to get started. Go Wildcats, and I'll be talking to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Okay, the next, thank you, sir. The next item is, does involve a presentation, and this will be, this will be part of the summary and update of the middle school and high school exit survey results. The PowerPoint here is in the packet for those members of the community who are interested in following along. So, to start, I think, I know certainly members of this committee are well aware, but I also know many in the community are aware that there has been a number of discussions and growing interest in recent, in the recent time period around the decline in enrollment that we are experiencing here in the Wilmington Public Schools. For the most part, that decline has been felt at the secondary level and has been discussed previously. The large focus of that decline centers specifically around the exiting from the school district of students who are transitioning from eighth to ninth grade, or of course, from the middle to the high school. In the slides that follow, my intention here tonight is to, just as some context provides you with snapshot of enrollment trends in Massachusetts, because I think that there's relevancy to that as it relates to this, this topic, to provide a little bit more detailed information regarding the Shawshing Tech School, something that we talked about as well, and, of course, the results of the recently completed exit survey from families here at the secondary level in Wilmington. I know that for those that read and follow a lot of the educational headlines, you have undoubtedly seen this pop up, and in fact, there was awareness around slow declines in enrollment prior to COVID, prior to the pandemic, and this has been a growing trend and an area of focus, and I think certainly some questions and some concerns certainly throughout the Commonwealth. And that is, centers around that downward trend in enrollment, and it's been throughout the state, and there has been either some degree of speculation and/or indeed awareness around what some of the driving factors may be for that decline in enrollment. And in large part, not necessarily in any particular order, they seem to center around the price of housing, immigration, the decline in immigration, as well as lower birth rates. I know that this is more of a discussion, I think, throughout largely the Northeast, as I understand it. I'm not that familiar with all of the data, but certainly I know that these are conversations and there's an interest that's been popping up. And I think that this is underscored and is sort of, I guess, echoed, if you will, throughout some of our surrounding communities. In no way is this an analysis of all our communities, but I just think it might be worthy to note for those that might be overly concerned about Wilmington just itself. Are we an anomaly? How do we compare to our surrounding communities? This is data that comes directly from the Department of Education's website. And quite honestly, this was just an effort to grab a couple of different years. There was nothing necessarily specific to the years that were grabbed, and I will point out, all of this information is available publicly on the Department of Education's website. So, out of interest, grabbed or plucked, if you will, 2013 and 2014, 2018, 2019, which was, I guess, I suppose with some deliberacy going into the pandemic, and then 21, 22, where we see we are right now. And a range of some of the surrounding communities, and you could see where their enrollment, that is obviously in the thousands. Ricka Burlington, et cetera, you can see where Wilmington falls, and down the very, very bottom is the state. And overall, the decline in enrollment of students in the state from fiscal year 19, or the 2018-19 school year, is just a little bit over 40,000 statewide. And you can see the trend data throughout the other communities there. So, just again, in the context of this conversation, I think it's somewhat worthy to note. Shifting gears a little bit to the Shawshing Tech, of course, an area of also some discussion and some interest around where it is that the predominant number of our students who are exiting the school system travel to and where they pursue their high school educational experience. The information here is kindly shared from Shawshing Tech with us. All of the information here has been shared through their school committee or in their respective school community as well. And so what you see here on this slide is, this is really pretty fresh data, if you will, quite recent, in fact. And what it shows you is the various classes of students, the total number of applications for the five-member districts. Wilmington is one of five. I know many know that, but perhaps not everyone, Bedford, Billerica, Burlington, Tewksbury. You can see as of January 25th, the total number of applications there across all of those districts, the percentage by town, and then correspondingly for the, for the different classes. There has been some interest that's also growing around, you know, what is it that Wilmington students are pursuing for those that are moving on to the Shawshing Technical School? And so what follows here is information around those sort of courses of study, but to note, it's not the ninth grade. As we understand it, the ninth grade is a general sort of year for students, and they don't have to, it's an exploratory type year, and so they don't have to specify until the end of their, towards the end of their freshman year. I know this is tough on this slide, but for those that are looking more closely at the slide deck, you can see the array of different pathways programmatically that students, from Wilmington specifically, and I did say that, sorry, but Wilmington students are pursuing. Again, thank you to Shawshing Tech for sharing this information with us. So, shifting to the, really the heart of this interest, and that was, as discussed previously, trying to better understand perhaps what some of the motivating forces might be of our students and families who are opting to explore or pursue education outside of Wilmington for their high school years. In January, a lot of part of January, a survey was sent out to families at the secondary level. By secondary, of course, I mean the middle school and high school, in some total. And so this was all through our listserv, our email listserv. We, we don't have direct access, or we don't keep, at least to my knowledge, we don't keep an email active for a family who has completely exited the school system. We use our student database, and so that's where we access that. So, 1,384 families were sent to the survey, 281 responded. You can see the breakdown for, from which, rather, families who responded and the corresponding grade level of students that they had. And you can see the largest number of respondents was at the eighth grade level. These come directly from the survey. We administered this through the Google platform, and so these graphs are taken directly from the data that was gathered from those 281 respondents. And for those that are parent, were parent guardians of students currently in the eighth grade, we were interested in better, better understanding what their plans were for the 2022-23 school year. And based upon those responses, you can see the percentage breakdown with the choices for that question of yes, no, or uncertain. We also probed that with the, from the perspective or the current thinking of our sixth and seventh grade families, and that's on the right-hand side of the screen, and you can see that pie chart there, and those responded, the respondents, 150 there that responded there. But certainly what catches those that look at this, and my attention most certainly, is the uncertainty at this point in time. Almost half of our current sixth and seventh grade families. And so I think that that's, that's very interesting and something that certainly, a lot of that catches the attention. Motivating factors that the respondents shared that were sort of at the root of their interest in exploring or their plans to explore a different high school experience. Now, there's a lot of data and information on here. The left-hand side is just the full, the full code or the full sort of the answer key there, because it's cut off on that bar graph. But you can see that there's a lot of interest in some key areas in particular, post-high school opportunities, and that, as an example, that we tried to orientate the thinking around with such things as college admissions or employment. And you can see the range of other specific academic programs, people who may have been interested in athletic opportunities and so on. There were a couple of open response questions on this survey, and, and so this, the slides that follow highlight what I would identify as the themes from those who took the time to provide us with their thoughts in the open-ended questions that follow, rationale for sending students. This was another category, sort of a catch-all, and so these identify, what I would share with you is sort of the dominant themes from the, from the, in this case, for this question, 72 responses. Again, better post-high school opportunities, more rigorous coursework, past experiences in the school system that may not have been deemed favorable or were concerning or problematic. Particularly at the middle school was, was a, was a theme that popped up a number of times. Desire to pursue a trade, certainly. Some evidence of concern with discipline. And, and it's certainly not last or least on that list, but number of, a number of comments around, just in general, the frustration with, through the pandemic and what public education systems have faced and the challenges therein. There were a number of respondents who specifically identified their interests or their plans to pursue enhanced educational outcomes that were different than here at the high school. Again, some themes, certainly technical education, hands-on teaching was quite prominent. There was some pointing or suggestion that the course selection and the array of options here at the high school were perhaps too limited for what they were looking for. In particular, the belief by some that STEM, the STEM areas were lacking or are lacking here at the high school. There certainly were a number of respondents who pointed to such things as, you know, the types of trades or the types of educational experiences that indeed the technical school provides, such as Shawshing Tech, nursing, art, plumbing, and so on, and some of the other themes there. The last open response question included just a general and broad category, also other factors. There was a lot of overlap, I would suggest, through the responses, I think you probably can see here, but I, I tried to pull out and share with you some of the other, some of the other things that popped up as, from the feedback and from the reading through there. So, next steps, you know, this was our first effort and to, certainly during my, my tenure, this is the first time that we have put, tried to push out a whole, sort of holistic, and by that I mean tapping into the middle school and high school families. The first time that we tried to gather this exit data, if you will. I, it leads to the question of, so now what? And what do we do with this? And where do we go from here? Obviously, I should start by saying that, you know, that the total number of responses was, one might suggest was reasonable, was decent. I think it falls in the, yeah, help me out, statistically significant range, but there were clearly a lot of families who did not, do not share with us and look at, we all recognize, and I do as well, survey fatigue and limitations therein, but I suppose it's a start. But I do think we need to think about this more on a deeper level. How do we gather information from families, from students, who are, who are planning to or who have made the decision to leave Wilmington? We've, we've talked about this certainly around this table before and, and at other tables throughout the community as of late. I think that we absolutely need to shift our thinking in a broader and more strategic way, that going back to that one data point of approximately half of our sixth and seventh grade families are uncertain as to whether or not Wilmington High School is going to be for them. I think we need to think more strategically about how and what it is that we provide information so that families and students are aware of what sits here in this wonderful building. You know, to use the phrase, we are not at all the only game in town, the only option for families. And that's a good thing on one level, on one level, but on the other level, on the other hand, this is and presents for us a significant challenge, and I would also say a much necessary or needed opportunity. And I think we absolutely have to, the final bullet there, think about how we can engage our students, our families, our stakeholders here around what's important for their future, what's important to consider at the middle school level, and really highlight for them what the various paths are. Clearly, many are well aware of it, whether it's for an older sibling in their family. But it would be deeply problematic, I think, for us all if families or students were making decisions that perhaps weren't rooted on educational decisions or sound rationale and that were getting swayed in a different direction that may not be specifically tied to their awareness of which path they want to pursue. What is it that they want to study? And that's hard for a young person certainly to do so, but I think we need to take this opportunity to think more broadly about that. So, that, that is it, and I welcome any questions or thoughts you have. Certainly, there's lots more we have to do with this, and I certainly welcome the collective thoughts, if not tonight, but at a future point in time of those around this table.
Thank you. I have so many, but I will pause and look at my colleagues to see who would, someone else like to start? I can start? I have a, I have a little bit of a list. You sure? Okay. So, my first, my first thought with the survey, so I'm gonna try and give us sort of some action steps. I found the survey to be framed for those leaving Wilmington Public Schools, not framed for someone like me who's planning on staying, or me, my son. So, it felt sort of, and I understood that, but I also didn't feel like it gave us any information about why people might stay, which I think would be sort of a next step. I think you'd probably want to know why I chose Wilmington High School, why my family and I chose Wilmington High for Hannah, and why we're probably gonna choose that for our son. So, I didn't feel like there was any room for that, so I feel like this is one side of the story. And all of those unknowns, I could see people looking at and going, well, jeez, I don't, I don't know. Are we supposed to be leaving? So I kind of was like, as I was doing it, I was like, oh, I'm not even sure I'm supposed to be doing this. So I just wanted to put that out there as a, as a parent of a child in that grade. I felt like it was sort of skewed. And then my next action step, well, you've already said this, you know, just not marketing well. People don't know what to expect at the high school, and this brings me to, we're not telling our story well, right? And I think that that's problematic for a number of reasons, but really problematic, because I'm actually not sure families are always making a decision based on facts, which you've alluded to at the end there. Like, do they really know what they're looking for? Do they really know what they're gonna get if they come here or don't come here? And I think that that's, that can actually be a disservice if we're not doing a better job of that. So that's sort of my, here are the things I think we can do, like we can attend to, right? We can attend to that future planning piece. We can attend to making sure our course selection is more clear. I heard the middle school students say that we were going into the middle school to talk to them about course selection. I don't know if that's happened before. Maybe that's, I don't remember if my daughter had that level of guidance at this point in eighth grade. Maybe that's, I don't know. But I think that's great. Like, I'm like, oh, that's good, because they're stepping in and they're saying, hey, these are the options that are available to you. There's this technology piece, so that's- There's this technology piece, so that's clearly a draw and I think that that's something we need, they, we need to look at or, at the programs of study. And we've done some of that with the programs of studies, so there's that piece. But then there's this, this culture piece, which I think we really do need to, not we necessarily, I mean, we as a district, I don't mean the school committee members, but as a district, I'll get into a little bit, you know, is it, what is happening that is make, having a family say something like, mm, this district isn't for me? I think that we really do need to think pretty deeply about that. And so that brings me to sort of, I have more points, but I'll stop there. My final point is, who is talking to the children? Who's surveying the kids? Are we sitting with focus groups of middle school and maybe intermediate kids and saying, what are your thoughts? Do you feel seen here? Do you feel like this is a place for you? Do you not feel like this is a place? So, I'm sort of like, I get all the family stuff, but I'm like, I feel like we're missing a kind of a huge group here. And kids can tell a really good story about how they're feeling at that school or at the middle or the intermediates and I think we need to invest in some of that. So, I'll stop there. I saw Melissa and then Joe, sorry.
I'm just thinking back on your last point about who's, who's talking to the kids. There was a survey that was administered at the end of my daughter's eighth grade year, so last year. I've been curious to look at that data in comparison to.
This data, because parents completed this and kids completed that. And I'd like to look at whether there's alignment there or whether there are gaps there. I know that there, you know, have been child experiences that were, you know, where kids were not, didn't have a great experience, but I actually wonder if it's more parents that are not feeling connected, you know, to the culture of the middle school. So, when I hear these, our representatives come and talk tonight, I'm like, oh, my gosh, I didn't know that. I didn't know that was going on at the middle school. And I just don't feel like as a parent that I should be having to receive or get that information from a school committee meeting. I mean, I'm, I'm in the position where this is great, I have this privilege to be here and hear that, but so many parents are not. But I'd like to, I'd like to look at a comparison of those two surveys and data and see if there is consistency there or, or not.
I was going to be there, off that as well. I just feel like you hear too much from parents that the culture at the middle school is what's sending them away. Those who have stuck it out seem to love the high school. If, you know, of course you're going to have your ones and twos are not happy all the way through, but you're never going to make everybody fully happy. But I think, you know, a lot of this is, the next step seems to be geared at, you know, what can we do at the high school level? But I think we really need to dig deeper into the culture and what's going on at the middle school, because I think most of what's happening at the high school is a good story. And, you know, yes, we definitely need to put that out there better than we have been because I do think too many of our students at the middle school, they just have a bad taste in their mouth for some reason and they don't know what the paths are up here at the high school. You know, the Shawshing Tech is in there right from, seems like right from September, this is what we have to offer, come to our open houses. You know, they're offering a lot. Same with any of these private schools. I mean, they're starting, you know, October, November and recruiting kids and we haven't said anything. I mean, we could almost start when they enter sixth grade, like this is what the high school is about. Like, we have the focus of these kids better than these other schools do and why, you know, maybe we can, you know, offer what we have good sooner before they start looking outside. But I think the bigger piece of that is why do so many families have a bad taste from the middle school? I mean, I know a lot of that was all the turnover we've had and maybe now with more consistency, that'll go away, but somehow we need to change the mindset of the community that we've made some of these changes as more things happening and show them that maybe it's not all bad. And if you're still having bad experiences there, what are they? How can we fix them? You know, is it a systemic issue? Is it a one-off issue? But I think too many people are just hearing the middle school's horrible and they just walk away.
Mr. Smahup?
Yeah, I really, I agree with, with what you're saying, Joe, too. The, the idea of we need to sell the high school, right? That's a priority, but also really dive into the culture at the middle school. You know, I, I look at these rates and I see, you know, the, the rate of loss of, of students when I, when I look at them, you know, sort of in that comparison between the other districts, we're, we're at three times the rate of the state. And, because we're, you know, from, we're like, it's a 12%, 12 and a half percent loss rate versus the next closest town is Redding, which is at 8.6% in terms of, in terms of loss from 19 to 21. And I think it clearly has a lot to do with the, with the middle school. I mean, there's, there's clearly, in my mind anyway, there's clearly a huge problem with the middle school. And we really need to continue to do this, to continue to survey kids. But I think having focus groups, I think, makes a lot of sense. I'm really interested in finding out more of the, the middle school review, see how that's going. But like, like Joe was saying, there are, you know, there is such a bad taste, many families have just a bad taste in their mouth about the middle school, which was not my experience with my kids at the middle school at all. I, I thought it was, they had a great experience there, but I know that's not true for everybody. So, we really need to figure out what it is. Is it just the turnover in leadership or, you know, what's, what's going on there? And I think, I think really deciding, you know, really taking a look at it and really saying, you know, like, we have, we have a problem.
Let us say, I'm just going to jump, I'm sorry, but I think that, I mean, I want to be, I mean, I'm not disparaging the middle school and I think actually, no, I know.
Please clarify, that's not what, I'm not saying that.
No, 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 I'm saying, I know we're not, I know none of us are saying that, but I don't want people to listen and be like, wow, they, I mean, I think what we're saying, and I don't actually think it's, I mean, I too have had good experiences there and I think we have fantastic teachers there, we have strong curriculum, we have really good systems in play. Like, there's actually, I think, a lot, I mean, and this is just from a perspective of, I've only had two kids go through, but there's a lot that's going very, very well. I think middle school's a hard age regardless. I think middle schools everywhere are, have a hard, have a harder time than they might at the elementary and the, and the high school. But I also think there are probably some fixes that just have not been looked at and I'm, for example, more standards-based as opposed to such a heavy focus on grading, for example, right? So, what are we doing there that's sort of saying, mm, I'm not sure this is a place for me? And then I think, what is so different about elementary and, and the intermediate versus the middle? And there's this feeling of, we got to get them ready for high school, we got to get them ready for high school. But when they get to the high school, it's actually, it's quite different. It's, 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 it's not, it's obviously grading, but there's a little bit of a different feel around grading here than there. So, I'm just like, wait, let's look at this, for example, as one issue and say, so I don't think it's the middle school, I think it's a hard age. I think there's a huge shift from elementary to middle and there are things we can really look at and focus on by talking to kids and teachers and families and say, okay, so let's actually make some changes here that are going to really affect kids in different ways, not just these like, we need more, of course we need more stability, every school needs stability, right? I mean, that's a course. Dave, drew your hand up. Or Melissa had her hand up.
Go ahead, Dave. Yes.
So, issues, issues like this involve both perception and reality and you need to, I think, tackle them in, in both areas. So, you know, we've mentioned before that we need to sort of tell our story better, that we need to, you know, market the good things that are happening, happening. But at the same time, we have to make sure that we, you know, continue to emphasize those good things and make sure that they are in fact there, that you can't, you know, marketing sometimes has a, a bad reputation because it sounds like you're just trying to, you know, use psychological tricks to just like, you know, convince people it's all flim-flam. But people will realize pretty quickly if there's anything actually underneath the claims that you're making. And so we have to look at it on, on both sides. If there's, you know, you can, you can have great things, but if the perception isn't there, then it kind of doesn't matter. But in the end, you know, you can only, people can only have perceptions for so long that are not backed up by reality. So, you really have to, have to tackle both sides of that. The other thing that I want to put out there is the idea that I think we need to be kind of setting this expectation even earlier, that the, it's not just, you know, it's not just that we need to focus looking at like the sixth and seventh grade, but when we're talking about the elementary and the intermediate schools, that we should be talking up the high school and finding opportunities for them to imagine themselves at the high school. I mean, a lot of, sort of a lot of life is the images you have of like how you, you imagine your future being. And that, you know, there are, I think there are probably opportunities that we can get kids in our other schools to come to the high school for some kind of special event and then they can sort of see themselves here and picture themselves being one day like these other students that they see. And that, you know, the, the more that you establish kind of just a, a baseline understanding that one day I'm going to go to Wilmington High School, then, you know, for people who truly want a different path and want a different educational experience, fine, there are always going to be kids, you know, who want that. But that, just that there's sort of a baseline understanding that just like, that Wilmington High School is where I'm going to go as I move up, as I move up through the districts. And I think that starting, starting earlier and just creating that kind of, you know, base level understanding and expectation will also help us a lot.
Me too. I'm sorry, my goodness, what is happening to me? Usually I'm just, I never talk till the end. Mrs. Burns?
I just want to say, I think one of the best examples of what you've just spoken about is when the high school students do parades through their element, the younger schools, like with Wilbon Street or North, because it, it's, it's, it's a memory of capturing their academic career and their, and their memories of school, as well as giving the, the younger students that one day they too will be capping gown and graduating. And, you know what I mean? I think that's a, I guess, age-appropriate way of meaning. And I, I just, it just humbles me so much to see these kids because as we sit up on that stage every June, I remember these kids in my CCD class, I mean, they were only seven, seven, eight-year-olds. And to see them, young men and women, you know, going off, you know, and starting, you know, post-high school adventures is just, but I, but I think, I, I love that piece and I think that's a great way of, of meeting the means that we're discussing, so.
So, I'm partly feeling like we've had this discussion many times as a committee, right? And at one point, I think we had decided as a committee to put the middle school on our agenda at least once a month or we had talked about, let's keep this on the front burner. So, I want us to get back to that and perhaps to really develop some action points. I love to hear that there are focus groups happening. I'd love updates on that, you know, and sort of hear what, you know, what are, what are we gleaning from those focus groups? And I'd like to revisit, you know, the principal's entrance plan, I forget what that's specifically called.
Entry plan, yeah.
And, and to just get Dr. Cork's pulse on, you know, I feel like she is our, our best sort of, potentially our, our guide in this process because she has the most contact with students and families. And to just have a better sense of what are some of the actual steps and plans that we're working on actively right now.
I will just share with you, relating specifically to the middle school piece, that you will recall that, not that, I forget, time's a blur, but a, a number of weeks ago, we, we did actually send out a fairly robust survey on the middle school level to parents, students, and staff. And we are anticipating those results to be finalized and back to us soon. So, that is a report that is very comprehensive, very comprehensive. It is, and so that will certainly be something that will be coming before you as a committee and the community in short, in short order. I, I can't commit to that to be the next meeting, but if not, soon thereafter. So, that's one piece that I just want to share with you because it's certainly relevant to this discussion here, too. And the community, just, just really quickly, I mean, I think, and I, I just, for as much as I know that you've been talking about it and I've been talking about it and for those that are in the community, this can't or should not be, you know, I hope ever perceived as a desire not to have our high school students pursue an education at Shawshing Tech or any other option that they might be interested in. And I think that this is a complex, clearly scenario to try and unpack, you know, of note, my understanding, just as a quick snapshot of the other communities here, is that Bedford is a community historically is very low in the number of students that they send. In fact, I believe in recent years in the single digits. I, I may be mistaken, but I believe that Bill Ricker had an adjustment in their numbers as a total of their population that went downward when they moved, the eighth grade moved into the high school. I believe that has rebounded and I, and please don't quote me, but that's my, that's my understanding. So, I only share those things to say that at the larger level, there are certainly complex community issues at play here, too. And I fully understand the discussion linking to, you know, interest concern around the middle school level. But certainly, there's so many elements to this and I, you know, I think that's also just worthy to keep in mind as well, too.
I also think that there's potential for just like trends, like amongst the students that talk about, you know, you know, the tech and there's like social implications for kids, too. And, you know, just my pulse on like, you know, the last couple of grades that have, that have gone through the system, I do think that sometimes there's a lot of social pressure for kids to go and it's sort of like, when things are trending, they're trending. And I, so I, I anticipate that the trends will, will change, but I, but I do think that it behooves us to work towards, you know, shifting the trends for, when it's appropriate to do so, you know? There's always going to be appropriateness for kids who are interested in, you know, the technical world to, to be there and that, and I'm so glad that, you know, we participate in that. But I think that sometimes kids are going there because it's trending, too.
All right, thank you. So, I think, Mrs. Plowman, this idea of having it back on our agenda probably makes good sense, so maybe we'll add that maybe just once a month at this point, but, all righty. Wildwood?
Very briefly, the Wildwood School, this is not related to MSBA, but specifically, just to give the committee and the community where we're at, there has been, over the last week and a half, a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes. I cannot begin to tell you how complex the movement. On the surface, I recognize that to the, sort of the community looking in, it might be, well, you've got about 160 students and a handful of staff, how hard can it be? It is very difficult. We are closing a building, we are relocating programs into spaces we don't have. The plan and the update for you is this, we've, we've made those spaces, but it has not been easy and for those, you know, interested in watching how we're doing this, we are, we have found and been able to secure appropriate space at three schools, the high school being one, the Wilbon Street, and the Shawshing School. It was not by, it was not for desire or want to separate the Wildwood into three different schools as we temporarily closed the school to allow for the cleanup, the oil spill, but we had no other choice based upon a thorough analysis. It, it, it means that we are not only relocating the Wildwood students and, and teachers, but also unfortunately asking a number of staff in those, what we're calling the host schools, to also relocate. And so I just want to acknowledge that unfortunately, this is having an impact on many, many students and ultimately many, many staff in our, in those other schools. The staff at those schools have been great, the principals and leadership teams have been great working with us and my team as we try and find solutions. This is still very much a work in process, there's a lot of, there's just a ray of complexity. I won't go through it all now, but from cares to food services to nursing and the list is miles long. The plan right now, though, to share with you and, and information that has gone out actually within the last short time period here to families, we, we are planning to, with the assistance of public buildings, move the Wildwood necessary furniture and equipment over the course of next weekend, so the weekend of the 19th and 20th. The last day of school.
The last day of school for students in Wildwood will be Friday, the 19th, sorry, 18th.
Eighteenth.
The movement will take place the 19th and 20th. Unfortunately, we felt like there was no other way to get at this but necessarily to suspend school or not have school for students at Wildwood on Monday and Tuesday, 21st and 22nd. Our staff will be working, they will be in their new locations, essentially unpacking all of the things that have made, that have made its way over. We are planning to offer optional walkthroughs of those sites for families and students who are interested in doing so on the afternoon of the Tuesday, the 22nd, and school will resume on Wednesday, the 23rd of March. So a lot of activity go, is still underway, but I wanted to give you that, that information again, is, I can say that comfortably, it's gone out to all of the Wildwood families at this point. So I'm happy to take any other questions, I'll keep, certainly you posted and the community posted, but folks are stepping up collectively, working really hard, and we will make the very best of this unfortunate situation, keeping, you know, the Wildwood students and staff obviously at the forefront.
Okay, other questions about that? No. Just say thank you, I know, I know, well, actually, I don't know the amount of work that's, but I can only imagine what this has been like for all of central office and administrators, so, and teachers, so.
Yeah.
And not just at Wildwood, but at these other buildings, so it's, I can't even wrap my head around it, and I also can't believe that a plan came, we came up with, well, you came up so, so quickly. So I think that, you know, we're grateful and, and wish you good luck in the next week.
Yeah.
All right. That brings us to old business, which is guidance changes discussion, that is, oh, sorry, yeah.
Just before we move on, I actually, I know it's like, it feels like ages ago, but I want to jump way back to the beginning of the superintendent's report real quick, just to make two, two quick comments.
Mm-hmm.
One was that, in, following on Dr. Brand's gratitude for the result last night at Special Town Meeting, I also just wanted to acknowledge that there were so many people who came out last night that not everyone got into the meeting, that there were people who were still in line outside the building in the cold waiting to come in to vote, including two students, including-
Including some of our own members?
Two of our members here, who didn't even make it inside the building for the vote, and, and it's, that was unfortunate, but having so many people come out and show support for this project and, you know, help us, help us move forward into the next stage is really gratifying, and, and so also thank you to everyone who showed up, and especially people who didn't even have the satisfaction in the end of casting the vote, but were there, were there anyway, and it's, it's so much appreciated that so many people came out. And then, very just quickly, on the Wildwood principal, Wildwood principal announcement, very excited to have Bissell join the district, and wanted to say one more thank you to Sheila McGaddams for serving as the interim principal there for, for all these months. A great, a great turn that she did for us in that role, and so I wanted to thank her once more.
Thank you, absolutely. All right, are we good? Okay. Now we're going to move on to old business, and that is the guidance changes, Molly Dickerson and Linda Peters. Come on down. You don't really, I don't think you actually have to have it in front of you, believe it or not, I think it catches you, isn't that the way it works?
Sounds good here.
Good there, yeah, that's what I've learned from WCTV.
So it's good to see everybody again, you should have the slides that I'm going to go through, there's a lot of information, I thought it would be best to kind of revisit in the order that was originally presented with additional information, so that's where I'm hoping to go tonight. Am I supposed, is ours?
Do you have, is this up?
Right.
You don't have this?
I would have the box.
We have it in the packet, though.
Okay, so we're all set?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great to have it projected if you can track it down in the electronic packet, but, but yes, we have it, we all have it in front of us.
Okay. So.
No? Continue.
Okay. So the first slide there is just the proposal about the GPA scale, we talked about this previously, so our current scale is that 4.3 scale, and we'd be moving to a standard 4.0 scale, which is really just the widespread scale used at the high school and college level. That would be expected to be implemented for the class of 2026, so we wouldn't be making any changes for current high school students, that calculation would go into effect for the incoming freshman class and then be used from that point forward. The second slide just reviews the transition to the plus-one scale weight for coursework, so I mentioned this in the previous presentation, but the way our scale is currently presented, students lose points for decreasing rigor, which is just sort of a philosophical kind of frame that I would like to change in conversation with students, and it really is not the standard scale in high school. So we would like to move to a weighted scale where students earn additional points for additional rigor rather than subtracting points for removing rigor. So that scale, that plus-one scale is what's used at the state level when they evaluate students at the, for the state universities and colleges, so we just felt it was generally the most widespread used and would make the most sense to adopt here for our students to have the most accurate information as they prepare for post-secondary.
Let me actually stop right there, before you move on to the decile.
Yep.
Is there anything else with this? Because I think, I, I certainly have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if others, I might be the only one who's just not, this isn't landing with me, so I, I'm just trying to understand, if we're moving-
Are you all, you guys, is everything okay?
Yeah.
What's happening, what's happening around here? If we're moving to a 4.0, but, but, but really, you can have a 5.3, is, am I reading that properly? So if you have all AP classes and you have all A pluses, you can actually have a 5.3 GPA?
So that would be a weighted GPA, so we don't actually publish a weighted GPA, the unweighted for that student would be a 4.3, if that makes-
It would still be 4.3, so we're not, so, so we're moving to a 4.0, but they can still actually get above a 4.0?
So, yes, so the standard scale's a 4.0, at the college level, what you'll see is colleges don't give additional points for an A plus, that's generally standard. At the high school level, it varies, so we talked about that a lot, do we give students additional points for an A plus, do we not? And ultimately, we decided to recommend still having an additional weight for an A plus, just because that's the expectation that students have had in the past, and there are high schools that still have that option, so we wouldn't be unique in having an additional weight for a, I shouldn't say weight, additional point for a 4.3 A plus, if that makes sense. It's, it's really just the difference between giving additional-
Yes, I mean, it does make sense, I guess, so I'll stop there, David.
So, let me just make sure that I'm on top of this, that the, I, I think that part of what's, what's a little confusing is that saying that we're moving from a 4.3 to a 4.0 scale, when there's still a 4.3 at the A plus level, seems a little bit confusing, and it's, in fact, the, the levels, the numerical correspondence with the, with the letter grades doesn't actually change until you get down into the B plus level or so, when it starts being off a little bit by like a tenth of a, you know, of a GPA point.
Right.
And so I think that might be a little bit part of the confusing, it's really just a, sort of, a restructuring of some of the lower-down corresponding, corresponding points.
Right, yes.
And then the, I think the other thing that I just want to make sure that I, I think I got this from the slides, is that the, the extra weight from the AP and the honors courses, that only, that weighted GPA is only used for awards at the, basically of the 12th grade.
Correct.
And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't go on transcripts, it's not shown to colleges, it's, you know, the, the regular, you know, to 4.3 scale with, you know, with these new correspondences that you put in here. That's sort of the, the official one, and it's almost, it's just an internal thing that we use for certain purposes and awards at the end of 12th grade, that's, that's really all the weighted GPA is for.
Yes, that's exactly right, thank you. Thanks, David. So, so let me follow up, so thank you, David. So if a student takes A push, right, AP U S history, and they get an A, and someone who takes college prep gets an A plus.
Yep.
You're saying outside of Wilmington High, that college prep student has a higher GPA?
A higher weighted?
Unweighted.
Unweighted.
Which is what colleges will say.
Correct.
So what is the motivate, I mean, other than obviously they get college credit, what is the motivation for potentially taking a very rigorous, challenging AP course?
Yep.
And maybe getting a, a B, which is fine?
Yep.
When they could have taken honors and gotten an A plus? For example, what's the motivation here for, so I, for a child to do that when they know they can get straight As if they stay in college prep? Is it just the awards at the end of, and obviously, the reward of taking rigorous, all, all of that, right? But aside from that, when they go to apply to college, what's the reward there?
So I should preface that by saying, unweighted GPA is, is vastly standard at the college level, so reporting a weighted GPA out of high school would be very unusual for us, so that is the standard when students apply to college. In terms of how it's accounted for, that's where you're looking at rank. So a student's GPA would give you, the college, a sense of what kind of grades they got just numerically, and then the rank would give the college a sense of what was the rigor of the coursework in comparison to the peer group. So a student who potentially had an A in a CP course compared to a student who had an A in an AP course, that student in the AP course earns additional weight, which means their rank is higher when the rank is calculated. Got it. So their GPA may be the same, but one student's rank will end up being higher than another.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on this piece before we move? Melissa, you look like you might have one.
You both asked my question, I'm just still processing.
Okay, I'm still, and I'm, I am, and I understand many schools have this A plus, there is a piece, as we move into the next part of this presentation, that talks so much about social-emotional learning, which I think was my push the first time, and I really do want to take that seriously, and I'm, I'm battling with this, and I'm not suggesting we get rid of the A plus, but it is truly, I'm really, it's a quandary for me, because I'm like, ah, is this what we really want for our kids? And this is why I had said to, you know, can we have Christine Murray talk with us about, like, are we thinking deeply enough about what are we doing to those, those high achievers when they are, I mean, I've heard around, oh, if I don't get an A plus, then I, I've already lost, I've already lost, and I'm like, oh, gosh, an A's great, I teach at the university, you just get As, you, you don't get an A plus, there is just an A, right? So I'm trying to like wrap my head around, are we really attending to their social-emotional health, are we concerned about that, or do we think actually it's fine to do that, because they're going to just continue to do extra credit and revise and do whatever it is they need to do?
It's funny, because I had the same exact question, and lucky for me, my sister's a school counselor, and I said, look, I want to let you know, this is where I kind of stand, can you give me a broader perspective and understanding as it impacts it? And granted, she's in an urban district, so I know with, in looking at this presentation, you know, especially taking away the, talking about maybe doing away with the, the superl, you know, the, the class-
Ranks.
And such, she said, you have no idea how many students obsess over that, they, they can barely even function, and, and they do become so depressed that if they don't get that higher mark, they have the fear of failure, the fear of going to college, so by removing them from all peers, nobody knows, nobody knows. And she said, it, it offers an equity where they can, there's, the high achievers are still going to want to achieve, but nobody is, is feeling ostracized or segregated by those who are more prone to academics than others, and I'm not explaining it as well as my sister did, but I, I did have to ask that question myself, especially in this modern day and time from when I went through the process of it, so.
But I think that, I mean, on some level, whether it's an A plus or an A, is not going to solve the problem. If you have a numerical scale and you just say, well, that a, you know, a 96 to a 99 is now going to be an A instead of an A plus, now just the top students are just gunning for that same numerical score, and it's just the new top, top score is an A. So I don't, I don't think that that really solves much of the issue. Now, rank is definitely a different, a different thing.
Conversation.
But I, I, I think as far as the grading scale, that's just kind of arbitrary, but just, you know, making it clean and consistent with what colleges expect and other schools do seems to be kind of a, a win for, for us. And I don't think it'll solve that problem, whether we have a 4.3 or a 4.0.
Okay, thanks. All right, anything else? No, all right.
So the next slide is just a review of the recommendation for transitioning to a reported decile rank while maintaining the academic recognition. So I think I gathered some information that I'm going to share with you, and you've already had a chance to review, but I think it's important to just revisit this, since that we're not making a recommendation to change our recognitions at this point in time, in part, just because I, I, from a department standpoint, I don't feel like we have enough information to make that kind of change at this time, we haven't surveyed our students in our greater community about that, so that's not a recommendation I made in this proposal, but the proposal really is talking about how we report information to colleges and changing the way that we report, the same information exists, we're just talking about changing the way that we report it on behalf of our students. So the next, I'm looking at a slide, you should have a slide there that says GPA in one, there's an arrow that goes this way to unweighted, and an arrow that goes this way to weighted, so, oh, that's my fault, hey, very helpful. Okay, great, well, now I'm looking at the slide that I was referring to. So the unweighted GPA is based on our current 4.3 scale, which we are making the proposal for the 4.0 scale, points are assigned to the final course grade that a student earns, that GPA is reported to students, it's reported to colleges, it's reported on the student's transcript, and it's recorded in Navion, so when a student goes to apply to college, it's there for them to compare themselves to other students, and it also populates on the student's transcript when the counselor sends information for the student. The weighted GPA is happening behind the scenes, so the weight comes in with that new potential scale, where a student in an honors class would earn an additional point, five points, and a student in an AP class would earn an additional one point, but that calculation happens, like you were saying, sort of behind the scenes, behind the curtain, it's never published, it's not shared with students, it's not given to colleges, it's not reported on a student's transcript, it's really just used to determine the student's rank, which is reported, which we'll talk a little bit more about. So what is rank used for? So we're just talking about the end-of-year recognitions in grade 12, and then providing colleges with information to help them evaluate our students as applicants. That's the only thing that Wilmington High School uses class rank for. When we're talking about grade level, I just want to make this clear, a student in grade nine to 11 does not have a rank, that calculation could be done, as I said, it all happens kind of behind the scenes, but it's never even used until a student reaches the end of their junior year going into senior year. In grades nine to 11, there are end-of-year recognitions, so we do acknowledge our top five students, which I'll talk about on another slide, but that's not based on the student's GPA, it's not based on their rank. In grade 12, the rank is calculated officially for the first time at the end of grade 11 going into grade 12. So our goal as a department is to provide a transcript to every student over the summer, they have their official GPA and their official rank with an official transcript going into their senior year, so they know going into 12th grade where they stand in terms of GPA and rank. Rank is reported to colleges on the student's transcript, there's an example later in the slideshow, but as a specific number, so right now, we would potentially say the student is ranked 34 out of 205. And like I said, the recognitions at the end of the year in senior year are based on rank, so at the end of the year in grades nine to 11, it's based on a simple average, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but in grade 12, it does switch to, it's based on the student's rank space. So this is the end-of-the-year recognition, just in more detail, so our students in grades nine to 11 are recognized with a simple average, that is only numerical based on how the student has done in their coursework, it's not, they are not assigned points, so it's not based on GPA, it's not based on rank, it's just the numerical average of the student. So in grade nine, for example, that calculation is based on three quarters, in 10th grade, that calculation is based on seven quarters, so it's calculated at the end of quarter three. For grade 12, it's also calculated at the end of quarter three, but it is based on a weighted GPA or rank. So our students who are acknowledged at graduation as our valedictorian, salutatorian, and essayist are ranked one, two, and three students, and our ranked four through 10 students are recognized as top 10 in, at- And our ranked four through 10 students are recognized as top 10 in, at graduation or at the end of senior year. So when we were talking about making this proposal, we were considering several different factors, which I have listed on the slide and just kept them on the next slides, just so that you have them to reference. So we were thinking about, how do we make sure that we're in line with our peer districts? And make sure that we're following the prevailing trends in education, that we are following best practice in this area? How do we make sure that we're minimizing any kind of harm that might come to our students as applicants? We certainly don't want to put anybody at a disadvantage when they apply to college by providing potentially too much information. Is there a way for us to share information with the college that does not, that minimizes that impact on our students? And as we were talking about just briefly earlier, to think about how rank and GPA affect our students social emotionally? And are we, are we addressing that in a way that is potentially equitable to all students? But also gives the colleges the information they need without exacerbating an issue that we know exists for our students? So this slide is just talking about the academic history and the context that we were considering. So class rank in general has become of decreasing importance at the college landscape. We looked at information from the National Association of College Admission Counseling, which does a survey of colleges every year. So they survey about 200 colleges, they ask them to rank, for lack of a better word, the factors in the college admissions process and how important they are to evaluating an applicant. So class rank is on that list. And in 2014, the number of colleges that said class rank was either considerably or moderately important was 52%. And as we moved even just five years into 2019, that percentage has decreased to 38%. So as maybe a chicken and the egg kind of situation, as more high schools eliminate rank, more colleges are saying it's not important. And as a result, more high schools continue to eliminate rank. So I do expect that that trend will continue, that rank will become less and less important on the college landscape. And if that's the case, do we have an opportunity to address it, to change the way that we're using it in a way that is more beneficial to our students or has less of a negative impact on our students? We also looked at our local districts, so out of the ones that we were surveying in our sort of peer group, seven of them have eliminated class rank completely. That wasn't necessarily a move that we felt like we could go forward with at this time, just because of all the the community factors at play here, and that we haven't had a chance to really investigate in depth. And the communities that have done that are, tend to be different from Wilmington. The ones that are most similar to us are our peer group, tend to have changed to a decile or a percentile rank. So they're still providing some kind of gauge for their students of where they fall within their peer group, but they're not giving that specific rank like we are. We actually, I think we might have been the only one at this point that is still giving an exact class rank. So to the next, this slide. So talking about, so that's the sort of academic part of this conversation, the college landscape part of the conversation. We also did consider how our students are affected by class rank and GPA. I know it can be, it can be a hotspot, it can be a point of frustration, it can be a point of stress. It can be very difficult for students to navigate, especially at that higher level, where they do feel a sense of competition. Fortunately, not all of our students feel that way about it, but there is a large group that is affected in that way. So we looked at our youth risk behavior survey results from 2021, where 41% of our students reported that school demands and expectations do cause them negative stress. There were a list of choices for students to choose what caused them the most negative stress. And for our students, that was the primary answer. Forty-one percent of them responded that school was the primary source of negative stress. We also looked at the U.S. Surgeon General's advisory, which came out earlier this year as a result of the pandemic and looking at the trends in adolescent mental health, and identifying some of the risks and how schools and communities and other, you know, stakeholders or groups of people could address some of those concerns. And one of those in that report was talking about academic pressure as a contributor to the mental health concerns that are growing for the teenage population in particular. So those were all, that was all part of our kind of assessment of where we stand, where do we go? How do we balance these different priorities? So I made it as a balance on my slides, just to give you a sense of, there are competing priorities, I think. And as we looked at this information to consider, how do we address the anxiety or stress that might be caused by this for our students, while also still potentially providing information to colleges and to our students, honestly, about where they fall within their peer group? Because it can be an important piece of information. It can be motivating for some students when they, you know, get their information and find out, oh, I didn't realize that, you know, those Cs or Ds in my freshman year made that much of a difference, but I still have time to change, I still have time to move forward. And so it can be motivating for students. But so we were looking at these two priorities and how to balance them between each other. So, so this was kind of our, these few, couple of slides were our, what I call like thought experiments, where we looked at how, what things would change if we prioritized one category over another or at the expense of the other. So if we're looking at minimizing anxiety and stress for our students, we could do a lot of things. We could eliminate class rank completely, we would not report it to colleges, we would not report the student's course selection rigor. We could eliminate our top recognitions for our students in grades nine to 11. We could eliminate our recognitions for students in grade 12. And we could eliminate our recognition for the valedictorian, salutatorian, essayist. So that's sort of what we felt it might look like if we were to maximize or prioritize only the anxiety and stress of our students in a way that would potentially change a lot of practices that we have currently. The second one, I looked at, we looked at together, potentially, it turned out that were a lot of the things that we were doing. So when we look at providing colleges with information about our students, and we look at what would that look like? So we would report our exact rank, we would report our student's course selection, we would recognize our top students. All of those things potentially would be on the side of giving colleges information about our students and maybe not considering the impact of that on our student body. So that, and like I said, it sort of turned out that that's kind of where we fall right now. That wasn't intentional, it just kind of came out that way as we thought through what it might look like. So the next slide is where we've looked at, tried to look at, where can we balance? And where can we find the middle ground here of what makes sense for our student body, but also what makes sense for us as we prepare students to go off to college? So, and this is our proposal. So we would potentially be changing our class rank from an exact rank to a decile, which I'll go into a little more detail about. Not reporting our student's course selection in comparison to peers. I didn't go into this in a lot of depth, just because it's, our students don't necessarily even know that this happens. And, but it is part of the college admissions process, a counselor has to certify the student's course rigor. So there's a question that says, in comparison with your college prep students at your school, this applicant's course selection is. And you have the choice of most demanding, very demanding, demanding, average, or below average. As a counselor, that's a very difficult judgment call to make. One counselor might make a judgment call that a student with four APs is the most demanding, or a student with three APs is the most demanding. Or does a student who has all honors classes, should that be considered demanding, or most demanding, or very demanding? A student who has CP coursework, I certainly would not want to rate as below average. So that's part of where we're making the recommendation to no longer answer that question, so that the student's transcript can speak for itself, the level of their coursework can speak for itself. And we're not making a judgment call where it really is not necessary, and to not cause harm that we certainly don't intend for our students by having to answer the question. So the other part of this proposal, or I guess, it's not really a proposal because we're not changing it, but would just be to maintain the recognitions that currently exist. And if we potentially wanted to look at that later down the road, I would just want to be able to collect some more information about that. So understanding the change that we're making, I just wanted to give an example so that you can see what this actually looks like practically. So what we would be doing is calculating our student's weighted rank, which we already do after grade 11, and then calculating deciles based on the class size, so that your students with a certain rank are in the first decile, second decile, third decile. So on the next slide, so this is an example of what a transcript looks like for a current Wilmington High School student. You can see in the top corner, the GPA is reported, a 3.25 on a 4.3 scale, and then 91 in a class of 135. This is just an example, so you see, you know, very concretely what this would look like. So if we were to change our scale, the GPA would now be reported on a 4.0 scale. And the rank would now say seventh decile, or many schools use top 70% as a reporting of the rank. So rather than a specific rank, a student would have a rank that says a student is in the top 20% of their class or top 30% of their class, and so forth. This is just a review of the timeline. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we would be transitioning to a 4.0 scale with the incoming class of 2026. We need to do some work in Aspen to make sure that that populates appropriately, so that may take a little bit of time. Transitioning to the decile rank, because we're changing what, the way we report information that already exists, it should be a fairly quick change, because we're not changing the way it's calculated, we're just changing the way we report it. So in that sense, we could potentially make that change for the class of 2023. So when they go to apply to colleges, they'll have a top 10%, top 20%, top 30%, rather than a specific rank in their, on their transcript for the fall. And the last slide is just a review of the two proposals tonight. So the proposal to transition to a 4.0 scale, and then the proposal to transition to a decile class rank.
Ms. Solomon?
I have a few questions, actually. Um, thank you.
So obviously, the, in particular, the decile change, changing to a decile format. I see it as helping some students and maybe hurting some students. So, for example, let's say I am 15th in my class. I'd want schools to know I'm 15th versus I'm in the second decile. I don't know, I just, perception wise, I don't know, you know, what colleges and university, how that, how that sort of gets perceived. So my question is, of the 38% of schools who do hold some importance on rank, based on that, where we can find that data, what kind of schools are we talking about? We're talking about Ivy League schools versus, you know, other schools, does that make sense? Like, what schools really do still hold importance on that?
So the data is not that specific, unfortunately. Having worked in an Ivy League school, I can say there is still, I would say they would probably be part of the category that says it's either considerably or moderately important. I can only speak for the, well, I can't publicly speak for the one that I worked for, but that's the only one I have specific knowledge of. But I don't, we don't have that more specific than what the information is from the College Admission Counseling Association.
And in terms of, when you were looking at our sort of neighboring districts, or like our peer districts, and sort of determining which ones you compare us to, and sort of saying like the ones that are most like us, what are those factors? Like, how do you decide, like, compare us to, like Burlington, because, like, what are those factors?
Yeah, so we looked at the same list of schools that each department had looked at in the program review. So there was a list of, I don't remember how many, 20, 30, something. And then we looked more in depth at some of our league schools, our league counterparts, so other schools in the middlesex league.
You know, I have questions, but I'm going to wait, Mr. Solomon.
So I'm curious, so I, I like a lot of these proposed changes. I'm curious, when we're thinking about the reduction, you know, minimizing anxiety and stress, however, like in the different scenarios that you presented. You know, one of them is to keep this top five for grades nine to 11. I'm curious why we think, or why you think, that takes such, that would be an important thing to keep there? If we want to consider reducing stress and anxiety, because I, I think that those top five, especially when it's not even like a weighted thing, so it has nothing to do with, with course rigor. But even if it did, I think, there, you know, when you've got this top five, there's a very little difference between many students. You get, you get students who get straight A's but are not in, you know, not in that top five. And so I'm wondering, well, what is the purpose of having the top five? What are we saying when we're honoring these students? And I don't want to take anything away from those students that are, that are in that top five. But I don't know, like, to what end is it, like, what is, are we, if we are causing anxiety and stress on students by doing this, is it worth whatever benefit we get from recognizing those top five? So I have some questions about, you know, just about that. I don't, I don't necessarily know if, if it's worth it, in my opinion, I don't know if people agree.
I do agree, but David?
I think I'm feeling kind of the same way. I actually also had a question about why we even do the top five based on simple average rather than any kind of weighting? Because it really just says that, all right, you could be taking less rigorous courses. And, you know, obviously, you know, because of that, get a higher numerical average, and then, you know, be in the top five over people who are taking more rigorous courses. And we take care of that with a weighted GPA for 12th graders. I'm wondering why we don't consider that something to do in the, for nine through 11?
So I don't necessarily know when the top five began. I can say from my standpoint as a counselor, potentially I could see a benefit where a student who's in all CP classes but is appropriately placed there and works hard and does well, potentially should have the same eligibility for some kind of achievement recognition as a student who's in all honors classes. I don't know where the, where it came from. But I could potentially see that being a sense of, if you base it on a weight, are you cutting out a whole group of students who are working equally as hard or who are appropriately placed in their courses and have achieved well, but are not eligible for recognition?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would respond to that by just saying, but that's not really a top five then. Like, if there's, if the goal is to recognize people who are excelling in their courses that, where they belong, it seems maybe there could be a way to do that, but that's, but a, a top five doesn't seem to be implying that's what, that's what it is. But I have to say, I'm kind of along, along Jay's thinking that, I'm not sure what we gain from having a top five in grades nine through 11. Like, once you get to senior, you know, once you get to 12th graders and you're applying to colleges, then, all right, people are going to be compared against each other. But, I mean, I, I mean, does any college actually care whether you were top five in your freshman year when they already have your entire high school career to look at when you're applying as a, as a senior? I mean, I'm not sure that it has any advantage there. And so I really am wondering, like, other than like what, bragging rights, like, is?
Motivation?
You know, and I would actually, I am a complete
You know, and I would actually, I, I am complete agreement, and I would really actually like, I've been saying this for a couple of years, having attended that, even prior to having, um, a child at the high school, I would go, gosh, this seems a little antiquated, I'm not really sure how I feel about this, you know? I think that, and now having, you know, in a child who's in the high school, it's sort of like, along what Jay was saying, that, that, I mean, we can talk separately about that ceremony, but there are just so many students who are just, in some way deserving, where they literally have all A's, or all A pluses and one A, and they're not sometimes recognized at all. I mean, there were situations, I think, where some students were invited who may have, like, even a sibling, who was, and it's just, I feel like, who are, is that motivating, or is that actually gonna have someone who's at that high, high level say, well, I mean, I did the best I could, I got all A's, and I didn't actually get any award? I mean, I think that's really, really quite dangerous, especially for our high achievers, and then also for students who weren't, weren't recognized, or were recognized for that other award. It's sort of like, uh, well, okay, like, I'm not, I'm not here because I'm, I just think it's, ah, it's really, every time I sit there, I go, oh, okay, and I don't, it just worries me a little bit, because I think if we are saying we're, we're committed to their social, emotional health, are we doing that? Which brings me to my next actual question, which is about this decile, and just, how, what is the, really, what is the difference? Like, are we talking, is it miniscule, really, like, between one, two, three?
Yes.
And so, now someone has a very high GPA, and they're, they could be in the third or fourth? Is that correct, or...
So, so, two points, I think, to address some of your questions. So, when we look at our student, um, distribution, right now, we have twenty-five percent of our senior class has a four point oh or better, and our juniors is a thirty-one percent, and sophomores forty-four percent of the class. So, when you're looking at having all A's, there's a lot of students who have all A's. So, when we look at potentially a class rank, they are close, that range, um, tends to be, tends to clear as they get older, it, it tends to spread a little bit more. But we do have students who, that's, that's part of the challenge of class rank, is that you're giving the context to the college of where the student falls within their peer group, so there is, when you have a lot of students who have all A's, there is gonna be that spread where a student may not be as highly ranked, even though they do have very good grades. So, that's, I think that, that's, I think, a challenge of class rank that exists beyond, you know, whether we report it in one way or another. The same question would occur if, if we didn't report it by a decile, you would be looking at a student whose rank is fifty out of a class, even though their grades are very good, versus having a reported decile, where you're, you're not giving that granularity to the college, they can only consider what we give them. So, if you have a, a group of students that we can say are in the top twenty percent, that potentially benefits them more than saying, this student is ranked thirtieth.
Does it, does it ever reflect poorly on a district, if we, like, the less and less and less we report, and we sort of become more and more ambiguous, or granular, as you said? Does, in the eyes of, of a receiving school, does that reflect poorly on us in any way?
So, I would say, I would say, potentially twenty years ago, yes. The way that the landscape has changed now, I would say, no. Um, and, and many more schools are moving in a position, there's, there's a movement now for high schools that don't give grades at all, and they give paragraphs of, of progress, and they have students who go to all levels of colleges, even to the Ivy League with a grade report like that. So, I think at the college level, you're, you can only, like I said, you can only consider the information you get from a high school, so, if your high school doesn't rank, the college can't consider that, and they can't hold it against an applicant, because the applicant isn't the one who has control over that, right? So, in that way, I would say, I have not heard, I have not ever seen it be a detriment to a student to sort of remove some of the more specific points that we've been talking about. On the flip side, it is frequently a detriment if the student, if the student has a very high rank, or if we give very specific information, like, like I'm talking about the, um, when we're talking about ranking a student's curriculum. If I, as a counselor, have to say, well, I can't say everybody's most demanding, so if I have a coun, as a counselor, have to say that a particular student or group of students has average or below average course rigor, I am probably putting them at a disadvantage. So, I don't think that there's a, yeah, from my perspective, from what I, what we've done, the research that we've done, the information we have from colleges, I would say, there is not a risk of putting our students at a disadvantage by making a change like this. It should, it should help them.
Um, I know that, um, state schools will, will recalculate GPA...
Yep.
Um, when a student's applied to them, so that they have a, so they take into, when they recalculate that, and you might not know the answer to this question, when they recalculate that, are they, they, are they sort of doing their own sort of weighted system? I mean, it might be, I'm not exactly sure what they do, but is it, that's what it is? It's a different, they're sort of doing their own weighted system based on what they see as the courses that the student took? Is that, is that correct?
So, yes and no. Um, so I can give you some information about that. So, every year, we have colleges visit the high school. We, as a department, decide what questions we want to ask them, so we do a survey every year. We've actually asked the question about GPA in two years. We asked in twenty eighteen and in twenty twenty, and what we found is many, many, so I think we ended up with eighty-six percent of the colleges that we surveyed, recalculate GPA. We asked a secondary question, if you recalculate, do you give additional weight for an honors or an AP course? The majority of them say yes, but some of them don't. So, it really is dependent from college to college. I would say, in general, they are giving, they're recalculating based on whatever scale they're using internally, tends to be something based on some kind of four point oh scale, and then, many of them are giving additional weight for an honors or an AP class, but I certainly can't say all. I could even give you the list of schools that said that they do, or they don't, uh, because we do have that information.
So, so, it's a, a high percentage of students, of students, of colleges will recalculate?
Yes, very high, yeah, almost ninety percent.
Okay. So, that, that makes me just think about, you know, if, if what you're saying is that, if, if we provide too much information, if we get too specific about a student, that actually could work against students, but the less information we provide, it's, it's not, nothing's gonna be held against a student, so it could potentially be more beneficial? And that's sort of the thought of behind doing a lot of this?
Yeah, so, what we're, one of the priorities would be to eliminate places where, as a high school, we're making a judgment about a student. So, if there's a, a space in an application, or a form that a counselor is filling out, or part of the information that I have to provide on behalf of a student for the high school, we're looking for those places where we can avoid giving a college a preconceived notion about an applicant, giving them information that may make them make a judgment about that student that doesn't need to exist, right? So, if we can give them the information they need, like, a student's transcript speaks for itself. I, I would not, you know, I wouldn't change anything about, um, the grade reporting and things like that. So, if, if I can give the college the information that they're looking for, but I can make them have the responsibility of making a judgment about my student, I would rather do that than have a counselor make that judgment, and be sending it to that college that they then use to make their decision.
That makes, yeah, no, that does, that does make sense.
So, I, I want to just kind of go back to slightly big level, and look at the, sort of the basic elements of the proposals here. The, so, the first one is the GPA, I, I don't see any downside to doing that, to me, that's an, that's an easy, we should, we should do that. Um, I think on the, the decile issue, I, I think I'm persuaded that this is a good trade-off. I mean, all decisions like this are trade-offs, but I think that this, um, that ma, maintaining some form of rank has some kind of, has some downsides, but, uh, especially when we're talking about that this only gets calculated at the twelfth grade level, I mean, it's a competitive environment, like, there is, you can't remove all aspects of comparison and competition, and I think that kind of changing from like, that strict rank, like, you are here, and everyone else is in front, and everyone else is behind, um, is a reasonable move in the direction of trying to, trying to reduce that, um, that a little bit. I think we should eliminate the top five in grades nine through eleven, um, I see mostly downside there, and, and not a lot of upside. In grade twelve, I think, I would, um, record, I, I would maintain it in grade twelve, though. Again, you know, once you actually get to the point where, uh, you're, you know, gonna go into the job market, or you're going to college, and you're, it's a, you know, competitive environment, I think it's reasonable to still have a valedictory and a salutary, and so forth, in the top ten. And, I mean, on one level, I think that that also gives people something to shoot, like, shoot for, I mean, you know, people know they're gonna be compared in some way, that they, they want to excel, and, you know, at least there's something to shoot for, if you know that, like, this is how you sort of get to be the valedictory, and that, take challenging courses, that'll give you a high weight, and then do really well in them. And if there, if there aren't, if there isn't something like that to shoot for, then, there's sort of a sense of, what do you channel that energy into? Um, you know, what, what are you, what are you trying to do then, to make yourself, you know, stand out in that process? And it's, again, it's all balanced, we don't want things to be so competitive that you get kind of an unhealthy, uh, an unhealthy culture. There were rumors when I was in law school, that, uh, that people would mis-shelve books so other students couldn't find them, um, because they were so, because it was such a, such a competitive environment, which seemed absolutely horrifying to me, but, um, but, uh, but I think that some of these, some of these aspects, especially in the, in the senior year, are reasonable, and, um, the, the ranking earlier in that, I don't think we get a lot of benefit from. I think I hit everything in here, but...
I think you did, yeah. I agree, um, I think that, the proposals as they stand, I agree with the top five removal, nine to eleven, I don't know if that's, if you need to go back to your team and discuss that, and then come back to us? Yeah, so that's, it, it really wasn't something that we explored in depth, just because we didn't feel like we had enough information from our student body or our community to really make a recommendation about that, and how it impacts our students. Certainly something I, we could go back and gather some more information about, um, before I would come back with a, a proposal for that. I just would like to have more information, um, on that point.
I'm just curious, others, how are you, I know that the three of us are feeling that we'd like to have that removed, but anybody else feel differently?
No, I mean, I, I think that removal of that makes sense, and if, if there want, if you wanted to explore other ways of recognition for, for, for those grades, sort of, perhaps looking, well, it's tricky, though, because you can't just recognize, you know, the top five, you know, students who are in CP courses, because kids can kind of be all over the map, right? I can be in honors history and CP ELA, English, so, that gets tricky, I don't know how else you could reconfigure recognition, so maybe the simple solution is to, to sort of rid
I, I potentially would have a greater question, and, and maybe this is not the, tangentially related, but, um, would you also, would we then have to consider how we recognize students? Like, every department has awards, every, like, some of the other things that happen to recognize students, um, I would just want to be thoughtful about those as well, if we revisit that, so I, I guess I would say, if it would be okay with everybody here, to go back and gather some more information, and revisit that particular part of this, um, if that's a sort of point for the committee to consider, um...
And that seems appropriate, and I don't think that actually impacts either of these proposals, because the decile, I mean, that...
Right.
That's sort of something separate, but because it's there...
Right, yeah, so I included it, so you got the whole sort of context, yeah.
Um, okay, Glenn, I know you want to talk about the policy, go ahead.
Well, no, I, I just wanted to, and forgive me, and apologize for not sort of framing this as, as, um, for some clarity at the outset. So, this is here for a couple of reasons, these proposals, rather, there's really, obviously, a few items here, as it relates to the GPA and the decile rank. Clearly, both of those would be, uh, a part of a handbook, and that handbook is something that is a school committee, you approve. You approve the program studies, and you approve the handbook. Program studies has been approved, as you know, handbook will soon to be. And so, the interest in coming back to this was to not try and just sort of slip this into a handbook that comes before you, but to have this kind of really great discussion, I think, an important one, around wrestling with these important ideas. Arguably, the, uh, the awards piece is not, to my knowledge, something that sits in any policy that you have, it might be, it might suggest this is more of a sense of the commit, committee, but clearly a larger sense, right? These are the kind of things that can be discussed amongst just a few here, but can really, uh, reverberate widely in communities, when you talk about honor roll, and all of those kind of things. So, I know that this was sort of nested in these, uh, recommendations, but just something to think about, and I think you're conveying a sense, at least not of the whole committee, but certainly some of you. You do have a policy, really, finally, related to this, um, policy, IKC, rank in class, so there's a nexus here, depending on, on, on where you go with that. Collectively, we're presenting this again to you, seeking, you know, your, your buy-in to this. I don't believe it's necessary at all for you to approve these tonight, but if there is a clear sense and a direction around their comfort with this committee, then it would be my suggestion that this can just come back to you as part of the handbook, which will be when again, Ms. Peters, typically, I'm sorry, I forgot, but...
Late April, early May.
Okay. Um, so, so unless there's more discussion that is, is felt to be necessary, if not, I think that they could advance and be a part of that. And the committee, it's, uh, sorry, the policy itself could be, um, you know, dealt with through the policy subcommittee.
Okay. All right, perfect. Um, and then I'd, I mean, I'd love to come back to this decile thing after we try it, and just, I don't want to sort of...
Sure.
Set it aside, I think it is something for us to, if we were sitting here going, I don't know, maybe we should kind of get rid of it all together, I think that it's something we probably should revisit in next year or the year after.
I absolutely think, yeah, over the next five, even ten years, it, it may be something we don't do at all.
Well, and just for, I mean, I'm looking at that policy, was it last revised in...
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six. So, yeah, I don't want to be the last one standing. Wilmington, they won't get rid of this, uh, rank and decile, they're just holding on, so, sometimes we hold on to things, because we haven't actually revised things, right? So, I want to make sure we're, we're keeping with the times, so. So, we appreciate, um, your, your further explanation, I know this has been quite a project for you to, to help us all understand, uh, where we're headed here, but...
Get to share the information, I never get to share.
I know.
It is so exciting for us.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very, very much.
With a wealth of information.
Great.
Are you done? Are you going somewhere? What's happening?
Trying to run away.
He's out of here. Snowstorm out there, I'm trying to get over my roof.
It is, uh, it's, it's nine fifteen. How are we feeling about, um, this school choice overview? Would we like to postpone that? What are our thoughts? We can, we don't have to make any, we're not voting on it tonight, this was informational only. Um, do we want to dive into this, or do we want to put it on our next agenda? To re, to, any thoughts?
This is always on the agenda this time of the year, correct? Because there always has to be a vote every year by June first, is that right? Okay.
I, I would say, I have a, I have a lot to, I have a lot of thoughts about this, and I don't know if other members of the committee do as well, could be a, more of a lengthy discussion, so, um, I would be, I'd be, and if it's, and if it's indeed June first, um, I don't know if we necessarily need to make any, have that discussion right now.
Okay, are we, do we, are we okay with that?
I'd like to make a motion to table this agenda item to the next meeting.
To a later date.
Is there a second? Oh, yeah, every, so, they clearly all would like to table this for now, so we will, we will put this on our next agenda. I didn't actually expect that, um, with only one item, an old business, I actually thought we would be done at nine o'clock, so I apologize, um, I thought we were getting better, I was bragging tonight about our timestamps, but clearly I have failed, so, anyway, we will table that, we'll put that on our next agenda, and, um, the next item then is subcommittee reports.
Uh, we didn't actually vote on MJ's motion.
Oh, sorry. Is there, who's second? I don't even know who's second. Thank you, Mr. Fenelly. All in favor of tabling? That's unanimous. Thank you. That's why you're here, David, among other reasons. Um, subcommittee reports.
I'm gonna wait till the next meeting.
Okay. I've been in so many meetings this week, I can't even remember what I said, it's a good thing it's spring break from BU, because I think I've actually been in a school committee meeting every single day for more than two hours, now that I think about it, and none of them were subcommittees, were they? Were they? Paul? No? Okay. Um, correspondence, MJ?
Done this evening.
Your school committee dates, uh, we've got March twenty-third, March twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth is Beauty and the Beast, get your tickets, apparently now, because they're selling out. Uh, March twenty-ninth, Virtual Author Community Night, hosted by the Shawshin School, we want to go to school, the Fight for Disability Rights, that's at seven PM. April thirteenth, we have a regular session meeting here, and April thirtieth is the annual town meeting in the, is it in the auditorium? And April 30th is the annual town meeting in the, is it in the auditorium? Or is it at Shriners? The Shriners?
It's in the auditorium.
Right? Oh, it's in the auditorium? Just kidding, it's in the auditorium. Could have sworn they said Shriners yesterday, but okay. And then that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
That's David, and seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That's unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Good night.